All set.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Hillary is not going to be here tonight, so I am going to be chair. So let me get all the formalities take care of first. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And I'm here, obviously. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Jeff Ferrante?
Yes.
Charles Gabron?
How's it's here? Oh, he's muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Brian Haas?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yes.
Okay. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Governor Baker signed into law on July 16th, 2022, extending certain pandemic-related policy measures. This bill authorized the continuation of remote meetings and public access under the open meeting law and other remote meeting provisions until March 31st, 2023. This committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please use the raise your hand function to let the Chair know if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. No? Okay. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Citizens comments. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments four, the number four, SC Meeting at maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until public comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. The Chair will read only one statement from each individual. However, additional comments may be submitted for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the public comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. So as such, the protocol supports an unidirectional public sharing of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. And then we have the meeting ground rules. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And now, before we get to the move on to the first item on the agenda, roll call to come to porter. Let's see. So roll call vote. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan, MES. So go to citizen comments. Doesn't look like we have any. Do you?
We do not. We don't have anything tonight.
You don't have anything tonight. Thank you. Brian, do we have any urgent business?
No urgent business. We'll cover it in the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay. Well, and that's where you're at right now.
Excellent. Colleen, if you can pull that up for us in presentation mode. That will be helpful. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Good to be here. We have a let's see. Okay, we can keep going. That's the date. We know what day it is. That's great. School opening, I think you've seen most of this, but it's just nice to put it out there. That school opening at all three buildings was really successful. From the high school to the Fowler School to the Green Meadow. At the high school, you can see one of the things they talked about was a positive mindset anchored by respect, understanding, and trust. And that was the message throughout the beginning of the year with the staff and the kids and the administration, the teachers. So great start to the year. Hearing really good things. The Fowler School, it's always nice when one of the key people, Joanne, who's been there for a really long times, as a quote, this nice to hear, especially when I think about a middle school, having spent a lot of time in a middle school, that is certainly not always the case. So it was a good start there as well. Both Mr. Barth and Mr. Snyder were really very visible in classrooms and just making sure that teachers had what they need, kids had what they needed, and off to a good start. Likewise, at Green Meadow, their message was all about building positive relations. The kids got there. They got off the buses without difficulty. And even in COVID, there are times we get calls on buses in the first couple of days. So the fact that everybody got there, really, I know Colleen's online, so we'll give Colleen a big round of applause because she really manages the buses. So thank you, Colleen. And that's not an easy task, even in a small district. We don't have a lot of buses, so that's a challenging task. So great job, Colleen. Thank you. All right, next slide. And obviously, I'm not going to read this slide to you, but the COVID update, so really we're following where we left off in the last year. There was an update on August 15th, which I've shared with everybody. Sort of the short version is in terms of what happens if you're COVID positive is that you're home for five days and assuming you're symptom-free, you're back from six through 10 with a mask. That's kind of the short and simple version. And there's some other, just, this is just information from Desi. But for the first time, Desi, DPH, CDC, they were all talking the same language and they were really giving the same advice, which just made the messaging that much easier for people, I think. So, next slide. And we are going to come back. I just, I'll pull this from tonight and we're going to spend a little more time in the next couple of weeks prior to the next meeting to flush these out so they're ready to be recommended to you as a school committee. So thank you for that time. And handbooks. Clearly, we're not going to read a lot of handbooks tonight. Hopefully, you've had a chance to open the links and see them. They've been read and reread. Lots of eyes have been on them to make sure that our newest policies that we've been updating at the end of last year over the summer. Those policies that are related to the handbooks have been updated, so they're currently up to date. And really, the only one that you need to approve would be the high school one. And the Fowler one is there for your reference and we will upload the link. Obviously, I'll send it separately that from this presentation, so you can see the Green Meadow one as well. And I know that both Principal York and Assistant Principal Dr. I've worked on the handbooks. So.
Do we need to do that vote now right now?
You can absolutely. I mean, you can. I think that would be fine and then we can go right on to grants.
And it's just the the high school one, right? So we would just so I make a motion that we approve the FY 24 Maynard High School student school handbook.
Second?
Discussion?
No, just Brian, I appreciate the doing this. I know this is part of what we've learned that it's just more of a procedural piece. And should we build this really into our, I'm just thinking about our annual calendar because I would like to, you know, get back to maybe revising, putting a placeholder specifically for this there that we need to just like for the for the fall? Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. Every fall.
Okay.
For the future, should we plan on doing it before the school year starts?
Oh, yeah, maybe.
I think that's a good suggestion. If we can do it at the end of August. It's the timing is tight because I like to have the guidance counselors and the teachers take a look at it just to make sure those extra sets of eyes, but I agree very, the latest we can go in August would be preferable.
So August, we'll, we'll just put a placeholder for August so we can just have awareness that that's a standard business that we need to do. Okay.
And if I could just make a comment, the, when I was going through the high school one, it appeared as though there might have been some policy updates that we haven't actually voted on. One of them was the pregnancy one that we're going to vote on tonight. So just wondering, and that's, I guess, another reason to do it before school starts so that any other updates on policies that we do during this year, I'm assuming we're not going to keep updating the handbook, but just to keep a placeholder of updating those as we go.
Mary? I believe, I believe the pregnancy one was conditionally approved and then the language about parenting was what we added.
Right, but it wasn't totally done, I guess, is, and it's fine. It's, the, the information is very important. Yeah.
Do we want to maybe just move the handbook approval to the end? Just, I mean, after the the policies?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just.
That makes it cleaner. Good suggestion.
Okay, so does, do we need to?
Okay, so I'll, oh, I think, yeah, I'll rescind, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
Or I guess we'll table the motion until later on in the agenda.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you. Colleen, next slide. So we, so I chose four grants just for you to go over with you that have come in for the most part over the summer. And they're not the big Desi competitive type grants like that. But they're important to us and they are definitely helpful. So we'll just run through these, Colleen. So it's the SWIG grant, which are our hydration stations. We received the grant for $24,000. And it's pretty prescriptive in terms of how much money is allocated to each school. It's based on size as soon, and he's been working on it. So I, so it's for Fowler School and Green Meadow Elementary School. Mr. Seboi's been working with our plumber to make sure that we have all the proper materials for installation and actually the plumber was there this week just to assess each of the fountains where they're going to go for space and material. So as soon as they're in, I will update you.
Brian, do we, do the, does the high school already have these? Is that why? Okay, got it. Thank you.
I think this will result in Green Meadow and Fowler having two of them, right, Brian? Didn't, didn't, from a previous meeting, didn't we say that they already each had one? I think that's the conversation.
It's a minimum, it's at least two, if not three, and I don't think Bob's on the line for me to.
Okay, that's okay. No, that's, that's even better. That's great. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the next one would be because I think you can just do all the grants at the end if you want, would be the Capital Skills for WAVM, which I think you've seen this information. It was for $196,150 from the state of Massachusetts. And it's, it is what it's named. It's to enhance WAVM, the student-run station. The funds really will be used to keep and update the studio because as you know, everything, I mean, Apple just came out with Apple 14. I don't know why, the 13 is pretty new, but they had a 14. So likewise, WAVM, they also need and should keep their equipment to be state-of-the-art so that our students have the opportunity to work with that equipment as they move ahead.
Brian, can I just ask how this whole all came about? Did the state come to us or Kate Hogan or?
Note, really, the staff for WAVM wrote the grant. They put this Capital Skills grant out annually and we don't always get it. But typically, if you ask and it's a good reason, you'll get something. We're very pleased with this amount. That'll really help our program and it's our only chapter 74 program. That's what they're looking for, a chapter 74 program.
So WAVM knows to apply for this every single year?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And so the Fowler School Investigating History Pilot, it was an $8,000 grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to allow teachers, so again, it's specific to teachers in grades five, six, and seven, to really implement inquiry-based lessons using investigating history curricular materials that will be provided to us. In additional, some of the funds go toward professional development and additional onsite training and support. So it's just another opportunity for our teachers to transition to inquiry-based lessons and get professional development around that. And they were the ones who were excited about this grant, actually, with the support of Principal Bark and wrote for this and received it. And finally, again, I think most of you know about the CPC Grant Funding for the Fencing and really Jay Rashie and Nicole Carlin should get credit for this. They really pushed this through the conservation, the
Yeah, CPC.
CPC.
Preservation.
Community present, thank you. And it's a lot of acronyms sometimes. And then I just filled the screen with them like DPW and CPC. But we've really worked collaboratively, collaboratively. We've met. I went with Met, including Wayne, Mike, the Athletic Director, Bob, Facilities, along with Justin from DPW and Jay and Nicole. We've had in-person meetings just to plan this out and make sure that when things come in. So Justin's overseeing some of the procurement because it's more building-related with, in conjunction with Wayne, who's overseeing the school side of the money pieces. So it's really, it's a collaborative effort. I would, they've allocated $110,000, which seems adequate to demolish the fence and put a new fence in. And if you've been over to the field and walked it, you know, the field, quite frankly, is not safe. There are sharp pieces of it sticking up and someone could get hurt. So this is a great use of this grant. And when it's done, we will have pictures to share with you. I'm excited for that and for our kids who play softball there and the town's kids who play there, quite frankly. It's a nice, open field. And I think those are, yeah, we'll hold on this, but so those are the four grants. If you want to, I think it's your purview to accept them, if you will.
Brian, the only thing I had a question, if I may, is I know, and I know, just again, for context for everyone, this is part of our, you know, due diligence and adhering to our requirements. So we will be doing this more on a frequent basis, which is, which is good. But the other part is when we met about this, there was conversations that there needed to be some type of cost center associated with the so we, where it was allocated most, it sounds like most of them are going to goods or, you know, in some capacity, not staffing or whatnot. So I'm wondering if that might be a consideration and maybe, I don't know if that had been discussed per se, but using the the cost centers and how that function would occur.
Yeah, and I know Wayne's online. I can't see him because I have presentations up, but I did see him before my screen changed. He may just know off the top of his head which cost center that these would be allocated to.
And if he doesn't, I don't, I hate to put on the spot. I just was, when I was refreshing earlier today, like some of the notes from Tracy. I remember that was part of it.
I found him. There he is, Wayne.
Cost centers only relate to the operating budget. Grants don't fall in cost centers.
Okay, so they're only, they're going to their own specified line and they're not going to be funding any type of staffing. Is PD isn't, would PD just get expense to that? So?
I'm sorry, I don't know what your PD.
Professional Development, sorry.
But there, none of these, well, the grants, they have to be set up at the town separate from operating budget and grants are a whole separate entity. And so things get charged there. Call centers only relate to the operating budget. Grants are very dictatorial about what can be charged there. So when, when you receive the grant, they tell you, like when Brian went through, like the SWIG can only be used for hydration stations. We can't use it for people. We can't use it to replace windows. We can't, you know, very, and all of these, because they're grants, have very specific purposes.
Right.
So that dictates and they don't, grants don't have cost centers by definition. They're run through the town. They assign an account number and all of our expenses then get charged against that account number. And again, we have to buy, buy, like for the fencing, you know, all of that money is in a, an account set up at the town and only charges that relate to the fencing can be charged to that. So it's, it's, it's like any other grant that we have. Those are not in call centers. That's call centers, the operating budget.
Okay, so I wonder maybe then, maybe, I know we're meeting next week for the subcommittee for the budget. Would, maybe this might be a good opportunity to kind of flush out some of these nuances for, for us to make sure that we're all aligned on the same understanding. Because I think Wayne, I think you were kind of in and out of that meeting and I don't, I don't have all the notes for it right now to reflect back. But I think Tracy was pretty certain that there needs to be some type of allocation for that, but I, I don't want to misrepresent.
Allocation for, for grants?
The, it's revenue. It's coming in. So where the, like where we would be approving the allocation for? I don't know.
I think your suggestion was really good. Actually, we can definitely flush this out at the subcommittee next week. We have those schedules already. And then I can pull the PowerPoint that Tracy sent. I don't have that in front of me either.
I just want to just create a good business process for all of us so we can maybe circulate and just say this is where we're, you know, this is what we, we think that we're recommending based on the guidance that she provided and then and just so we can make sure we're not winging it every time.
Right.
But I don't know if anyone else feels the same way or if anyone else has any feedback about that.
I don't have any.
No, good recommendation. Yeah, yeah. Actually, I had a question or I was wondering if it would be appropriate for us especially to send the CPC a thank you for the fencing? I wonder if they ever get thank yous. That's, that's pretty big.
We could certainly do that when it's done. I think that's appropriate.
All right, it would be great.
So do we want to move to a motion?
I think we're, so we're gonna, we'll table this and then we'll discuss it in the, because I think there might be some other pieces that we want to include. If it's, if maybe it's not, maybe this will, the next committee will be approved as is. I just thought that Tracy's indication is when we accept, when we accepted, that it would be accepting it to a specific place of where it's, we're accepting it to and sounded like maybe Wayne's.
I think we, yeah, like I said, we can flush that out and maybe the other kinds of grants, but that's.
Right, right.
Okay, so we're tabling the, the vote for the, these then?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that, Brian, if that's okay with you.
So the only question I have is we're not supposed to use grants until they've been accepted by you.
Are they? Are any of these more time-sensitive that are?
I just don't want to hold up, say, the SWIG. I don't want to hold up the plumber if he shows up on tomorrow. I mean, we know where that's going. That's going, as Wayne said, it's really only going to one line. You know, it's going to one place. It's not like we're going to accept that and then reallocate it. I really, and that's true for any of these particular grants. They're very specific.
I, I don't remember her saying that specifically. I just went to the, to the slideshow and I did find the slide, slide number 18. And it says this, so you might be thinking of this, it says, "The fiscal oversight of this district is under the purview of the committee. Money is one of the authorities of the committee." That's one bullet point. The second one is, "All funds, regardless of revenue source, must be allocated by the school committee in order to be expended."
The allocation, yeah, because I asked about the allocation of what that, that's where I had in my notes.
He said, you know, that, that.
I said, what, what does that exactly look like? And I said, is that like a cost center? She said, yeah, that could be a cost center, but it would have to be like revenue or like she said, there's like certain buckets that, again, I don't, I don't have that readily in front of me to, but there was an allocation aspect that I don't see in this. I'm fine if we want to.
Yeah, I was, my, my understanding was that she was saying that, you know, the thing about grants, kind of like Wayne was just saying, is that they are very specific. You know, you can't really, you can't do, you have to do exactly what you promised to do in the grant. I remember her emphasizing that. And so my reading of this means that, I, I think it means that each grant goes into, is somehow, you know, it is allocated somewhere. Right?
And they all seem pretty darn specific.
Right.
With their.
I, I don't think that, that we need to specify, you know, like a specific cost center or whatever, if they don't normally go to cost centers.
So I'm reading emails. Again, this has been on the listserv. If we can talk about it, I don't know if there's one. She does talk, this is Tracy commenting about people, other people were asking about grants. And she says that there is, the committee has oversight and should represent all revenue sources, has cost center oversight. And she goes into this whole thing about grants and revenue and allocation. So they review and approve for allocation. So I don't know, we can maybe punt her again to ask about what allocation is since we don't go into that, if that's the specificity we want.
About going wrong if we don't? What are you worried about going wrong?
I'm just worried, I just want to, I'm not worried about something going wrong. I want to be able to do our job when I'm doing it right. So if it's supposed to be that we're allocating it in a particular way, I just want to fulfill what we're supposed to be doing because we haven't been.
Yeah, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I think that it's like, it's clear, like it seems like all of these go clearly into a specific category. You know, that is already in a cost center, right?
No, that's what he, that's what Wayne just said. There are no, there are no cost centers for this.
Okay. But they're.
So I wonder if for these four in particular, because they're relatively low-dollar figures attached to them and they seem to be very prescriptive. Like we look at that and we know what the SWIG grant's for. We know what the Capital Skills is. It's, Capital Skills is only going one place as opposed to some of our bigger 240 grants or some of the other grants that involve, you know, partial salaries and support hundreds of thousands of dollars of things. I think those are the grants that get a little more complicated. So that's why those are not on the screen today. So in a perfect world, you would sort of acknowledge receipt of these grants so they can be implemented as soon as possible. And then we have that conversation and really flesh out, what does that look like for these larger grants that I don't think are as clear as some of these?
And can we?
Only if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. We can talk about it in the subcommittee. I know this is new for everybody. I just want to make sure that we all had the same takeaway and I know that Wayne wasn't there for that whole discussion. And I think coming together to finalize a business process would, would be helpful for future efforts. I'm fine with approving these, but that was my concern is I want to make sure going forward that we're just not doing an ad hoc what we think, that we're actually doing it based on what should be done. You know, my feeling, what might be needed, might be different than someone else's feeling when we need it. That's why they have the laws and regulations to follow.
If I could make a suggestion to follow up on Brian's thoughts is that number one, if in terms of allocation for these grants, the small ones are very specific like this, one of the things you could say is we allocate these grants as, as written, meaning that for the hydration station that you agreed to allocate towards the hydration stations. I think even though I wasn't there for the meeting, that allocating grants and some of the larger grants like Brian was talking about where we have more discretion in terms of where we want to use it, that you would then approve our allocation of this amount for salaries, this amount for supplies or this amount for
Right.
Buildings and maintenance. And so we would put something together to say, this is how we're allocating or in the, I call them buckets of how we're going to use them. And you would approve that allocation. But for these, if, if I can make a suggestion to, you say, we're going to allocate them as the branch for approved and accept them because like the fencing and the hydration stations, you know, we're going to need your approval because we're going to start to get bills and, and wheels are already in motion for some of these.
Yeah, I think we wanted, I just want to make sure that everyone understands like what the intent they're being approved for isn't going to be some, somewhere moved around later. That's also the reassurance I want to convey because there was a lot of work put into a lot of these grants. And, you know, people come and go and I just want to make sure that we, you know, are, are doing our due diligence demonstrate, this is how it was approved and that's how it's retained in that way so that. Are, are doing our due diligence demonstrate. This is how it was approved and that's how it's retained in that way, um, so that. A year from now, there's money left for the CPC one. It's still dedicated only to that and it, everyone can be reassured. It's not gonna be. Going to some other field maintenance or something to that effect. That's, that's part of the process, I think, is to build that confidence in our business, you know, our financial. Um, processes for the community as well.
Okay, so, um, then. Will somebody put forth a motion to accept these grants?
I can make a motion to accept the SWIG hydration station grant, the capital skills for WAVM. History in Fowler grant and CPC grant fencing at Keenan Fields.
Mary, do you wanna add the dollar amounts for those?
Oh, I can do that, absolutely.
Sorry.
The sweet grant for twenty four thousand, the capital skills for a hundred ninety six thousand one fifty. The, um, history pilot grant for eighty six hundred. And the CPC. Um, and that's the one, that was another one, and what was the last? Yeah.
A hundred and ten thousand.
Ten thousand, right.
I second.
Any discussion? No, okay. All right, um, take a roll call vote, um, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan is yes.
Great, thank you.
Brian, do we need to, oh, are we gonna keep going on that, or when, when, when are you planning on doing the, the district goals?
Not, not tonight.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna hold those until the following meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then the one comment for the MSBA, um, next slide, Colleen. So, most recently, we participated in the MSB executive board meeting. Um, very exciting. Um, and they, we were approved to move forward in the module four. They approved our preferred schematic design, so we're moving in that direction. That was kind of, that's one of the, the gates, if you will, that you need to get through. And we're actually having a meeting tomorrow with, um. MVG representatives, Chris. And Matt, and Matt, just about the building and rooms and whatnot. Um, we're continuing to have meetings on security. That was two meetings ago, and there'll be another one of those up and coming. So we'll continue to update you, and actually, I probably stole Mary's thunder. I'll let Mary do it next time.
No, it's okay.
But it's exciting news. It is, and we'll start, um, with the timeline of when we'll be doing more community outreach. We will be at the. Uh, Oktoberfest, we may be sharing a table with the MEF, but we will be there. We'll have a, you know, the. The big poster for the Green Meadow and the Trifold and whatnot, just to get it out there a little bit early. Um, they said. You should probably wait six, eight, you know, what, Mary was eight weeks or something before the vote, but. We need to get out there earlier. I, I feel like we wanna get out there earlier and just, so it's. A reminder, it's a reminder, and then we can really do a hard push. You know, at their, at their direction when it gets a little closer, but we'll start to be at events. Um, and, and emailing and, you know, have posters up.
Get some, we can get some buttons and shirts made and all that.
Do that too, yep.
I know we have a lot of PTOs who are, are very engaged this year.
We'll take advantage of that in a good way.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at with MSBA, very exciting.
Can I ask a question about, about, it's something that you just mentioned about the security piece. I know when they gave the presentation, it was something that I. Had asked about, but obviously it's not something that we, you know, go in depth with, um. In full scale and in a public meeting. Um, is there an opportunity at some point to hear more about? That maybe in an executive session, which I think allows for those conversations.
I mean, it, I, I, I think it could be at a public meeting. We can have Chris come. Um, the last meeting was really. Very exciting. It had the police chief, the police lieutenant.
Great, that would really be great.
A couple of security consultants. Um, so yeah, there's, there's not a secret. We're just, it's good, good conversation. It's really interesting. So you can pick a time in the next couple of meetings, I can work with Chris. Um, from MVG to, I, you know, when he can come.
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure. And I think that is it. Thank you, yep.
I just wanna say thank you. I was gonna ask about how we're getting it out to the community, so I'm glad to hear you'll be at Maynard Fest and that you're planning on doing a hard course. I think that's really great. So people know what's going on, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, so. Now on to our policies. Um, so we're gonna go start with, uh, AC.
Oh, and, um, just, um. Actually, nevermind.
Okay.
Nevermind.
Um. I don't think I saw any.
Is it ACAB?
No, we're doing, so the first one is just AC.
Oh, okay.
Which is the non-discrimination. Policy including harassment and retaliation.
Um, and that was the one that we were talking about having the AC dash R. Is that on this?
Yes, that, I put that in.
Okay.
Um. And. So I, I agree that we should put it in there and have it in there. But, you know, maybe what we can do is, you know. Kind of look, we can look into it a little bit more. I, I personally think that it'd be fine if we. Um, approve it. Um, and then we can just amend it if we really need to take it out.
Yeah, I would wanna hear the reasoning why too, because you can always amend or change AC. Dash R and not have to amend the policy, right? Because it doesn't. Cite the language in. The regulation piece.
Right.
Um, yeah. As well.
Um. Right. Okay, so. Do we want? How, how do we wanna do this? Do we wanna try and? Go, just go through them and then? Do a, a group?
No, we could do one, I think one by one.
One by one?
Yeah. Um, that would be my thought. I don't know if anyone else has a preference or something different.
Okay. So, um, can I have a motion to, um. Approve AC?
Make a motion to approve. Um, wait, hold on, real quick. This is. Amending, right?
This.
We, we have an AC, right, that we adopted in the blanket. I just wanna make sure. We're amending the one that we.
Uh, right, this is, um, a revision.
Revision, okay, I just wanna make sure. So we are, I'm making a motion to amend. Okay. Amen, okay, so I'll make a motion that we are amending policy, AC, non-discrimination. Policy including harassment and retaliation.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion, okay. Um, then roll call vote, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan, yes.
And I will also say, I think this. Policy is. Very timely, um, given some of the concerns we've heard. So I'm appreciative that we're reviewing and addressing and amending this.
Okay. Now on to the next one, which is, this is also a revision. Which is ACAB, which is, um. Sexual harassment.
Oh, I had, um, sent a note, um, asking if we should. Add some language about, um. This type of, um, harassment through social media. Um, for instance, a staff member corresponding with a student directly with sexual innuendos or something of that nature. And if I looked, when I looked at the harassment of students, the J I C K. They actually said written, verbal or physical. Parentheses, including texting, blogging or other technological methods, harassment or abuse. So it's, it's something that's on the harassment one. It's just not on the sexual harassment, um. Policy. Because it seems that that's the piece that's missing, that technology side.
Okay, so is there something, um, and I, about the internet, because I was looking at these, Colleen, you did a great job recirculating some of the ones. Wasn't, was there something about the? The internet, um, like interactions or how you engage with students. It didn't necessarily address sexual harassment, but. Is that something that maybe we could cite? At internet, um.
Now, like I say, it's actually referenced in the harassing one, so we could just take that same language and just add another bullet. If we wanted to, but.
You, you said that was in the JIC.
Yes, yeah, yeah, in the bullet at the bottom of page one. So, it just doesn't reference it here.
Oh, I see. Written, written, verbal or physical, including texting, blogging or other technological methods.
Right.
Or views, okay.
So it's not as if we'd have to, you know, send it to Sarah for, um, for approval or anything, because it's actually already in. A similar one that we're also gonna be, um, approving.
Written, verbal, physical. Abuse. Would there, um. Would it be different because I'm guessing this is more of. Like student to teacher is a little bit a different. Relationship versus like peer to peer or adult to adult, like as far as going on. I don't know how we would.
Well, this doesn't. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I don't know how we would like regulate that if someone is. Getting like online, an adult to an adult. I don't know.
This sexual harassment one doesn't break it down. Um, like the other one does for, like. Teacher to student or a student to student. This one just.
Just seems as though there's a whole category that's missing there.
I don't, I don't disagree, Mary. I just, I'm just thinking about, um. Because it gets a little, when you, you know, some of these statutory things, when you start changing them, and I don't know if it's based on certain other things or that. That would. Does change the con, some, I don't, I, I like the idea. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that also makes me think, Mary, now that you're talking about it. You know, it's, it says above it that while it is not, it is not possible to list all the additional circumstances that may constitute sexual harassment, the following are some examples of conduct, la, la, la. And so one thing that Mary brought up, I wonder if that's covered even without saying it, but the other thing I'm thinking about is. Um, displaying sexually suggestive objects, pictures, cartoons is one thing, but there's nothing here about solicitation of those things. And I wonder if that is automatically covered, or if we need to explicitly say something about that also, you know, soliciting that is also not okay. But this is where I don't, I'm not clear about why it was written this way, what legal already looked at it, why it's not there already. So I don't really know the context for why that sort of thing is not there, and what Mary is saying is not there either.
Okay. Um.
So if I can, I would.
Go ahead, Brian.
Brian.
My sense is MASC, but they pulled, they put this together, they ran it through legal. Um. And I think what you, we're looking at in those bulleted lists are just examples of. And it's probably an unending list, and they probably just, that's my take, is they grab that, they grab those six or seven things. And put everything together in legalese. So if we do wanna change it, which well within your purview, we should just send it back to legal. Because we know that this one's coming from MASC and has been vetted as it's presented.
Yeah. I guess I, I get, I always get so worried that. You know, so what happens if someone does list it something and then you go to the policy and it doesn't have anything there? And then we're like, sorry, there's nothing explicitly saying that here. It says things like this, but since it's not there, I don't want anyone to get caught in some kind of weird loophole. Just because no one thought of it at the moment that they had to think of it, you know what I mean?
I do, and I think that probably would revert back to MGL. As opposed to just a, a straight policy for our district. That to me sounds like we're calling the police and it becomes a national law that.
Okay.
And it does say that the, right under the, the legal definition, it was as broad in addition to the above examples, so I, I think we're covered that we would have to. If that incident were to come up or if someone were to report it, that it would probably be something that, Brian, you would go to legal anyway.
Yes.
Um, at that, in those instances. Um. I mean, maybe we approve it the way it is, just to make sure we have it in place, and then if there's a concern afterwards, it can always be amended.
I would concur.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so, uh. Just so for my notes. So that I, when we go back to our policy meeting, we, I can. Since, especially since Hillary's not here. Um, so we can talk about it. Um, one is the, the social media aspect.
And it's right, I had put a note right on the side of it, so you can see it there, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know why they didn't put that in there too, Mary.
Whole category, especially because that's all you hear about on the news is, you know.
Yeah, it does seem such obvious, like an op, you know. You know, to include, but.
Yeah.
Get a little queasy changing these things.
And then, um, Elizabeth, you said, um, about.
Patient, so instead of, instead of just sending, I don't, especially the pictures, you don't want someone to get in trouble for sending a picture. But they're doing it because someone solicited it who had more power than them. And then, and then you end up in a situation where that person is punished, another person who did the actual harassment.
Okay.
So I just, I guess in general, with a thing like this, wanna make sure that we're not. Not covering all the bases so that someone gets hurt by mistake. You know, we're actually, the, the spirit and the letter of the law are the same, you know.
Right, policy. Okay. All right, so. Somebody wanna make a motion to, um. Approve this revised, and then. I will bring this part back to our policy subcommittee and we'll discuss it and. Get more information about that stuff.
I will make a motion that we approve the revised policy for ACAB, sexual harassment.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan is a yes. Now. We're on to. JFBB, which is school choice.
I wasn't sure under bullet number two, um, it says by June first of every school year, if consideration is being given to withdrawn from the provisions of the school law. Of the choice law. For that specific school year, do we have to add that language? Because we wouldn't be doing it blanketly. We'd be doing it year by year.
Mary, can you, can, sorry, I was trying to understand her question.
That's right, if you go on to the, on to the policy, I've got the note directly to the right of it, of the, it says, so.
Right.
Bullet number two, it just talks about by June first of every school year of consideration is being given. Maybe that covers it because.
That's why I was saying, it has a, every school year, that's where, I didn't know if that was maybe.
That's okay, yeah, that should cover it then. Yeah.
Okay. Are we okay to, um. To start a motion?
Yeah.
Approved?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the amended or the revised. School policy JFBB for school choice.
Second.
Second, okay.
Um, uh, roll call vote, oh, discussion first, sorry.
Good.
No discussion, okay. Uh, Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan is a yes. Okay, now on to J I B. For student involvement in decision making. And this is. I think we're. Colleen, this one is a um a new one, right?
I believe we did discuss it last meeting.
No, but I mean.
Oh, but it's new, yes.
This isn't a revision.
Correct.
Well, we have.
We had a which is one O five, but this so.
We have to, we, no, we have to, I think, rescind that one because it's the similar, right? This is replacing that one or no?
This, this is something that is dated twenty twenty one from mask.
Right, but we have a policy that is outdated, like so we would be, we have to rescind that one.
Correct.
So and then, okay, that's what I was.
If that's what you want to do, yes.
So.
Right.
We're basically replacing one O five with J I B.
Right.
Okay, that's that's the intent.
Yeah, right.
Just want to make sure, because we can have the motion for that. Should I make a motion?
Um, yes, please.
All right, um I will make a motion that we rescind Maynard policy one O five and replace it with policy J I B student involvement in decision making.
Second. Any discussion? No, all right.
Um I I just had discussion about um where 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 would be be at once this is approved and this may be more of a Brian conversation or or talk or looking to get some student involvement.
So what was the item, not trying to know what the question.
So once we approve this policy, what is your plan for implementing and getting that student involvement aspect um off the ground?
So we'll start by having a student advisory committee and then we'll have a student as a member of representative on the school committee.
Okay, so so Principal York will or or Dr. O, they'll be, they'll get that green light to start.
Once.
They've already started, it went out in their smores this past week.
Oh, that's right, it sure did. I'm very excited.
But we also have to incorporate meeting with them every other month.
We have our part that we need to.
That's on us, right?
Build into our own process a bit. And we might be, I wonder if in that regard um maybe, you know, they go to a different subcommittee, you know, they can join and listen in or, you know, I don't know if that'd be be an opportunity to keep them involved in different ways, you know, depending on what their interest is as well, just as we think about how to implement it on the school committee level.
Sure, we can explore that.
Right, that's all the discussion I had.
Okay, anybody else?
I think we also had had a note from last time I had asked about Fowler, maybe having them be able to shadow or something like seventh and eighth graders because they've got a student government. I don't know if that's it, just for conversation later. I'd love to see that see it go down to that level so that they're, you know, really, especially we've got the civics program in that, the curriculum. I'd love it to to be part of that, but we can have that conversation later.
Elizabeth, anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Then um I guess we'll go uh to a vote. Um Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albada?
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan, yes. All right, now.
I mean, I don't want to jinx us, but we're kind of doing good here. I'm just gonna show you. I know, I know. I shouldn't have done it.
Yeah, and now we're on to JIC.
Okay.
A harassment of students.
Yeah.
Um. Mary, I can add that um that dash R.
That would be great, again, just so people know what to do, yeah.
Um and then, you know, we can figure out what we need to do, so um.
And this one, did it, it didn't have a a corresponding one that we needed to rescind at all for student? I thought there was something that.
Says it's new.
Right, I think it's new for mass, but I thought Maynard, like we had maybe one of those old ones that, so we're not having two policies that are similar?
I don't have anything in my folder.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think so.
No, we only had harassment policy sixteen and sexual harassment policy seventeen. And then bullying, which was different.
Right, okay, the sexual harassment, that's just the general policy. Seventeen and that one does not address students. Oh, it does actually. Um it does actually address students.
So.
In that policy seventeen. Yeah. So I'm wondering, do we need to rescind this one?
Natasha, which one was it again, what'd you say?
Maynard policy um seventeen zero one seven, it's uh sexual harassment and it just, it's it's not as in depth, but it does reference students, visitors, employees. All that, members of the community, blah, 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 uh anyway.
Okay, well.
So I'm wondering.
Cover ourselves, why don't we?
We don't plan on keeping this one, this is right, okay. All right, so let me say that seventeen and then this one is JIC, okay. So I will make a motion that we rescind policy, Maynard policy, school committee policy seventeen and adopt new policy J I C K harassment of students.
Uh with that cross-reference.
Oh, with, yes, with the added cross-reference for the JIC dash R.
Right.
If we should, do we need to or was this already done in the subcommittee? Like look at seventeen and make sure there's nothing we're losing if we take it out?
I assume that happens, that's where um I and I I looked over it high level, that's why I kind of remember there was one, it it does work, have a lot of the language. I actually looked to see if it had solicitation um that you were even thinking about just now and it didn't, so it. I mean, we can always amend it, I mean, at some point, if you, if, you know, there is something there, I would like to get it approved if we can tonight, just because it I feel it is.
No, I just want to make, I just don't, I'm not sure, I'm still not sure what happened, what we're, what we need to do now that was not done in the subcommittee.
This. So maybe we not, so seventeen was not one of the ones that we looked at, at least when, since I come on um.
So why don't we approve it and then you can take it back to the subcommittee? And if there's something that you feel that there's substantive, that just to highlight and if we want to amend it or address that we we can, we might feel it's you know, redundant and almost always.
Yeah.
But thank you, Mauro, for taking that on to just to make sure that there's.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, appreciate it. And also is if we um unless there's language somewhere that I'm not aware of that if you if you accept a new policy that that automatically kind of wins over the older policies, is there anything in place that way? Or does it have to be where you rescind every single time that there may be some overlap?
You have to, you should be rescinding because you don't want to have multiple policies all everywhere, you know, like that's why the handbook, Mary was saying that you don't want to, we approve one policy, but it's written somewhere else differently, then it's becomes a legal issue.
I'm saying, I mean, I understand that we want to get rid of it, but do we have to as a school committee, like actually go through and rescind all our own policies? All the time? Or do we, is that just an assumption that comes along with taking a new policy? That is in the same, are you sure about that or is that something that you're?
That's what we had last time when we approved that all the ones that we did, that's why if they were similar in context, we we did not, we had to go through and each evaluate each one to see like what is redundant or whatever, we couldn't adopt ones automatically.
So if we are, so if we are not careful about that and we have not rescinded old ones, then we are leading ourselves to a situation where we have two policies that say something similar. And and that leaves people deciding which one they get to choose, they get to pick and choose from each. What happens then?
I would say I I hope we don't cross that bridge.
Uh Colleen?
At the end, we're going to recodify everything and they'll be under the M A S C format with the lettering. So if we ever have, you know, we finish all that, we come up with a policy, policy number fifty two. We're going to know we missed something, we're going to look at it and make sure it just needs to be rescinded or if it needs to be incorporated into something.
Okay, and so then that way, so if something like, you know, God forbid it comes up along these lines and we have seventeen in place and we also have this one in place. Um we're not leaving it ourselves in a situation where someone's like, well, actually, I'd like to use seventeen because that's more in my favor.
Right, that's why we need to rescind the old ones and replace it with a new one.
So we do still leave ourselves a little open to that unless we absolutely.
Yes, hypothetically, it's not a good practice to have multiple policies that have differing information in place, yes, it could.
Understand that, but I'm just saying, again, I just, I'm asking a different question, not that, I'm I'm asking just, is it automatic? Do you have to go through? If you don't go through, are you actually leaving yourself open or not? That's all. Okay.
I think you.
Yeah, so and 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 I, so like, do we actually know that that is the case? That if like legally speaking, if some, if we have, if we have a new policy that we voted in and there's an older one that still exists, legally speaking, we know for sure that someone can go back to that old policy and use that instead.
Maybe that would be a question for Brian to ask Sarah the next time you're talking to her.
Right, I just, I I just want to make sure.
No, it's a good thought, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I can email her tomorrow, I understand the question being asked and I'll see, get an answer for the group.
And it's not an emergency, I just want to make sure that we know for ourselves so that when we go through, we do our work well, that's all.
Yeah, good question, I will ask and get an answer.
Thank you.
We need, still need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Now a vote, um Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albada?
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan is yes. Okay, now we're on to uh revised J I E. Which is pregnant and parenting students.
I'll make a motion that we accept pregnant and parenting students, so what do we, oh, we're amending it.
Remending.
Amended um pregnant and parenting students, J I E.
A second.
Any discussion?
This now, just a question, this does not have any regulation or cited or anything, so we're not saying that that's a practice we're doing across the board for for all of them, we're just saying that for some that we feel that there is more things and that's when we'll say, okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, vote. Um Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albada?
Yes.
And Mauro Hogan is yes. And now. This is A D F, the wellness policy. And this is just a first review.
I'll make a motion to accept it, um but I have a conversation afterwards.
I don't.
Wait, wait, wait.
We're not, we're not, we don't.
Oh, that's right, we're not, we're just discussing it, okay, right, we're not, okay, all right, so just discussion, so.
Well, I was going to ask you, Mary, is this the one? There's been a lot of conversation about the policy, is this the one that went through the wellness committees review?
No, and that was the conversation, I'm glad Charles is here also, so um a lot, the the wellness committee spent a good half a year this year um working with a Desi wellness coach and um also having eleven pages worth of a um policy and and inevitably go to Desi for their approval. It's not mask, but we had a template that we worked through, um and when I tell you how many hours people put in, so I was disappointed to see this come through this way. And I know there, we might be talking about having the, you know, the the procedural piece of it, but that was one of the first pieces that Charlotte Stevenson, our coach, said is that everything should be on the policy. Um she was kind of surprised, she was surprised that we didn't do it that way. Charles, you weigh in if you'd like to. Or not.
Jump in this, jump in the circle.
Okay, no, the 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 number one thing is I I believe everything we have done will be in um the between the policy and administrative regulations. I think it was decided, like, I'm not for the policy, some committees speak for that. But I think um I think every, all the work that we had done will be reflected between a policy and administrative regulations. So I think it's like things will be in two separate documents, but people on the policy subcommittee would probably know more about that than I would.
Can I ask a question? Um, so, and I really appreciate, Mary, I know that there was a lot of work put into that and it did go to Desi to get vetted. So I'm wondering, after all that work, why was it changed? Why do we feel that it needed to be amended?
Brian, can you, do you recall? I just remember.
What was the impetus for that?
Yeah, I I remember we just, we, we talked about um that the, that the whole one was so in-depth um that it was not not so much a policy, but the um the regulation. So, but I.
But was that informed by Desi though? It sounded like Desi's opinion was that it all should be in a policy, is that right?
Right, yeah, and she had an entire template for us to go through and and we, you know, she was meticulous helping us. And when I tell you there were seven or eight of us that put an awful lot of time and and work into it.
Yeah, I mean, I would really like to see that version that was actually Desi approved before us and and my, that'd be my preference, I don't know if I just don't know what would, if we're not, it's not informed by anything that Desi has already approved. I don't, I I'm just curious why we would, you know, unilaterally change the direction.
Brian, do you have any input or Colleen?
So most of the what's in A D F R is procedural. It's, I mean, if I, when I go through it, it's like the wellness committee will establish measurable goals, the superintendent or designate shall ensure compliance. It reads much more procedural than policy setting.
I I get, I get it, I get that, but I guess my my question is, what was the impetus for us amending it after Desi approved it? They said it should all be in the policy. So I get, we have an opinion that maybe it seemed more procedural and probably, I agree, I I it probably should, but I think in this particular case, because it had a a diffel- different level of scrutiny. Um it maybe this would be the exception to that standard protocol and we just adopted as it was already approved by Desi.
So I think that was their recommendation, this was our recommendation, we could defer to Desi's recommendation on that. I don't know that there's a right or a wrong, it's the same information, it's, it would be the only policy that we have that's a dozen pages.
Mm-hmm, yeah, understood. I guess being the devil's advocate, if we go back and find out that we shouldn't be cross-referencing any of the policies with that, you know, dash R um regulation, then the all the work, then where would that policy that we put together or um end up?
It wouldn't be connected is what you're saying, right?
Correct, yeah, 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 but um I and I understand, I'm I'm thinking that maybe it was just the easy thing to do with, was to do the um uh the mask one, um there are three pages, um because it keeps in continuity with the other ones, it's just, it. It would have been really nice to know that before all this work was done and before we thought that we were going through the right channels. Um, to put it together, so.
Yeah, all the work that you did is still included. Just, it's just broken into two different documents.
But we don't approve the po- we don't prove the reg, we only approve the policy. And so we have to approve what Desi is informing us, right? They told us what needs to be in the policy.
And they actually, and they looked at it, um, proved it at the end too.
The regs can change anytime without us ever seeing them. Like what, how they, so I, I'm, that's what I'm wondering, like, is that, I don't know how close that they said this has to be a certain way. And I know there's M G Ls about the wellness, you know, there's specific aspects. So I just don't know the harm in having just in this one nuanced situation because there's a lot of oversight for it. Um, to have a a larger document that actually reflects the work of the committee that what they did.
Well, and I believe, Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're continuing to work with that same person this year. So we can revisit that at the beginning of September. This was only a first read, good information. We can bring it back to this. Person, and if they say, yeah, it should absolutely be policy, then we'll bring it back that way. And if they say, no, you can break it into two. And that's what we would rec- we can go either way, but I know we're continuing to work with her. Let's ask that specific.
Yeah, that's what I wanna make sure is that it's informed by somebody other than our own, like feeling after it's.
I think that's excellent.
Any more, is there another context to why this policy is coming before us today?
What do you mean?
From this, the policy subcommittee, is there something else? Why, why, what is this here for? What, you know, given that we have this other committee that has been working on, you know, that policy?
Because it still goes through.
And I imagine that we already had a policy in place for the school, you know, what is, what is this doing for us that we are looking at this one now? I'm sure we had.
Because this is, this is taking, like, this is one of the, one of the ones, it's like, taking what we had.
Right, why now though? What happened? That, this, has it just come out from mask? Is it something that you just got to in the list of things?
No, this was, this was coming through from the Wellness Committee.
This.
So it has to come through the Policy Committee, Subcommittee.
The, the policy we're looking at, if I'm, if I'm hearing Mary right, is not coming through the Wellness Committee.
Right. Went through the Wellness Committee first and then came to the Policy Subcommittee.
So.
In a different format, correct. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't A D F, um, at the three pages. It was the, the lengthier one. Um, that was presented, I think in May, Charles, to the Policy Subcommittee. Yeah, so it was the, the one that we had put together. The Wellness Committee had put together, um, that went before the Policy Subcommittee. For you, but that, I, it's a great recommendation that we just tabled this for right now and just see what Charlotte, our Desi Wellness Coach. You know, have further conversation with her.
Okay.
Cause we do have a policy in place now, so. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody.
And now we're on to G C B A dash E. Which is the professional salaries table, and this is just a first review.
And so really, I can just tell you, this is set some guardrails, if you will. That's kind of the terminology we've been using for these positions. Um, it'll need to be reviewed annually, just as. Salaries always do, even the guardrails will do a quick review every year, um, in terms of salaries and benefits. Um, but as it's a first review, you know, take a chance, look at it, it really. Tries to keep things as consistent as possible within benefits unless we've moved somebody who's already been within the district that had something in place. Obviously, we're not gonna take anything away from anybody, and then the salaries are really not how much they're gonna earn forever, but really just hiring. Um, so related to how much experience they have within that particular, um, you know, within education and within that role. And then allows some guidance, which helps me personally.
No, Brian, I think, thank you very much. I know this was a lot of conversations and came up, I think originally in the Budget Subcommittee when we're talking about cost centers and how we can. You know, so I really appreciate the work that's been going, everybody to involve this and, um, like you said, this will be reviewed annually, but it does. Give you some good guidance on how to follow it. I like the structure that we're, um, doing the contract reviews. I know Colleen has done a lot of work in looking at all those older contracts to see how they align. So thank you very much for this.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any, um, comments, questions?
I, I just had a question with the, um, the facilities position. It's the only one that it doesn't say non-renewal date. Um, it's just, and out of courtesy, I guess it would be nice to, to have that.
It is the same, it is the same as the others, Mary.
Oh, alright.
I just missed a box.
Okay, yeah, I have total faith in our facilities person, so I don't want it to, I don't want anything to be said, but I got a courtesy, yeah. Just, but as long, yeah, so that'd just be updated. Thank you.
And, um, just a question about, um, Brian, I know you said. Um, the days, like, would people have different, whatever vacation, this is when, when there's a new person in a new position that would start. So the, can you give a little bit of? Um, context on the, what you're, but the twenty versus the twenty-five, you know, the big, the the rollover and what your thought process was. And establishing, um, that particular.
So you can see most of the, um, yeah, just trying to be consistent there, you can see most of them are five rollovers. Certain people had contracts before I came, so they had a different number in there, so that exists. Um, or they've been here longer and that's what was in place. Um, but what, my thought process is keeping that as consistent as possible with five rollover, as you can see, most of them, but actually, it's probably about half.
Cause I, I guess what I was wondering is, since we're acknowledging this is not gonna impact people's current, you know, this is for. Would we wanna have this more consistent where it talks about the carryover? Cause it looks like some of the carrier days are ten and five, and I think, um, I don't know if that's intentional to have them. Differing, like I see some of the high school. Might have a little bit, um, so maybe just a look at that as. And then I didn't know also with the professional development reimbursement, if that was considering what is currently done, or that would you imagine if the new positions roll over? What you would do, cause those look a little bit varied too. Not a lot.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Not a lot, just the the reimbursement. Yeah, there's like one, yeah, exactly. It could be intentional that way. I just wasn't sure if, um.
So right now they're, I mean, I think all but two are at fifteen hundred dollars. As a starting point, and then one is a little bit lower, cause typically there's not as much, um, professional development for that, for the thousand dollar one, for the facilities director. And there's typically more for the curriculum director, that just, that role tends to have more professional development. Um, it just requires that. So that was, that was intentional.
And then the other question I had was about the athletic director, because I know, and I just hadn't. This, there was some language in the contract that this was originally like a union position, cause it was stipend, right? Cause it had, um. And I, I don't know, know the exact page, but there was something about that the athletic director fell under. Um, Colleen, does this at all sound familiar? And I wondered if, two things, one, um, now that it's a full-time, it's an exempt position, I'm guessing now. Um, that we might need to, cause this might differ from what's in the contract for them, if it's. The athletic director's in there. I just wanna make sure that that's just flushed out, um, if there's any change to that, because that person is not in the union, correct?
Correct, correct. So when it was a stipend, it was typically a teacher. And so the teacher was in the union and it worked that way, but because it's a full-time, it's an exempt position, they're not in, they're not a teacher.
Okay, and so the sick days in that particular position, would that also be the, the one eighty-five? Or?
I will review that. Good question. Thank you.
Elizabeth, do you have any?
I only have, the only question I have is on the, on the salary grade, why the assistant principal for the elementary school is different? As, as far, like, it's a different, it starts at a different place in the.
Yep, so often, and the elementary principal, assistant principal, principal makes a little bit less than the middle school. Principal, assistant principal, and then the high school principals typically make a little bit more principal and assistant principal, um, just. I, I, I think it probably has to do with night events and not that you're paid for the night event, but. Or times involved in the evenings.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
I know it was a first read, so thank you.
That was good, thank you. And I know a lot of this work was done last year too, so, um, we hadn't had a chance for the whole committee to really get some eyes on it, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, sorry about that.
No, the only thing also just to add, so I know some, there were some policies, thinking about the ones that we mass adopted. Because this has like, um, vacation and and whatnot, I don't know if there, any of that needs to be cited more, however. We would wanna do in the future, so just to look back as you go back in to the policy, if there's, um. Citations for other mask policies that we need to include that talk about. Sick pay or whatever, or if there's any of those that we wanna amend. That were.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now I think we're going back to the student handbook. Um, where we tabled the motion.
Did we have a second on that motion? Or no, not yet?
I think we did. Yeah.
Okay. So we just go for a discussion and a vote then, huh?
Is there any, any discussion on that? No, okay, and we'll go to a vote. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
And Marah Hogan is a yes.
Um, you know, it feels really good looking at policies that are not COVID-related. I'm just gonna say. You know. Like actually student, like, impact, staff impact beyond mask and COVID seating and all that other nonsense. So I'm just. Feels good.
Yeah. Um, well, since Hillary's not here and she didn't, she didn't give me anything for the chair's report, um, so I guess. Just, I don't have a whole lot other than, um. At least for my household, um, school has gone really well so far. Um, and, um. Uh, we've had some really nice, um, interactions, um, we're posting to, um, exchange students. And I just wanted to say how, um, wonderful, um, and welcoming our students are to those students. It's been really, they were super surprised, um, and really thankful as to. How welcoming our students are, um, to them and feeling like they have been included. And it's been really great to see, um, some of the friendships that have come about, um, through that. So I just wanted to just thank all of our students and what a wonderful job that they've done. Along with, you know, the teachers that are helping, helping them, you know, get acclimated and things like that, so. Um, thank you so much, so. And that's all I've got. Um, let's see, Mary Branley.
Um, let's see, um. So we were supposed to have a master plan meeting last night, but it got canceled at three minutes because the chair is sick, um. Brian already talked about the M S B A status, which is great. Um, I actually met with, we were talking about having liaisons between some of the different groups in town, so I actually met last week with the director. Two of the directors at the Boys and Girls Club, um, to start those conversations. It was really productive, it was great. Another one that's near and dear to my heart, um. And, um, Natasha will be having two budget meetings next week, the Town Budget Subcommittee on Wednesday. And then we just set a, um, school, um, Budget Subcommittee for next Thursday. And just, I just wanted to reiterate a shout to, um. The, um, Maynard High School freshman, Kaylee Donahue, who won the National Essay Contest through, um, the Elks. On the best of me is drug-free, so she went through, uh, local states and then finally the national contest and she won, so. Um, just amazing.
She's an amazing writer.
Sorry?
She's an amazing writer. She actually wrote a poem, I think, for their eighth grade graduation and, um, was pretty phenomenal.
Mm-hmm, but then there was another article that, um, one of our recent graduates, Gracie Gilligan, um, did on, um. When teens, teens find misinformation, teachers are ready. Talked about, uh, her experience in Maynard and and, um, how a lot of the students don't talk to parents about, um, the validity. Of social, the information that you get on social media and that, that you have to really decipher what's fact and what's not, um. But she said she was heartened by, um, ninety-five percent of the seniors said that they had to do a research project. That required them to gather information from multiple sources and summarize their findings, so kudos again to our senior project. Um, and those were the, the other two things I had.
Great. Natasha.
Um, so I attended the Finance Committee meeting, uh, last week. And the Select Board meeting last night and, um, budget was a hot topic for, um. The bleachers came up, the, um, trash contract. And it sounds like the monies that we are, uh, the town is, we've gotten, um, the budget for F Y twenty-three is coming in. With a little bit better numbers, but those numbers, or those monies are already dedicated to areas of other need. In particular was the, um. Water, I guess the bids that went out for the well, those came in thirty percent higher or the, than anticipated. So that is one area, the, um. Uh, well, obviously the bleachers is another area that, and that was a discussion piece that talked about this. There were some people who were trying to kind of corral the folks in town to address a couple of things. And I know it was, it's really tough because. The report indicated that any retrofitting needs to be done by an engineer. So I think that's where, you know, balancing, um, what we can do to fix it versus the safety impact and, you know. Of who, how we do that and what that means for adding weight. Um, it was something that Greg is still considering, but Brian, you're getting, uh, bleachers, they came in, do they come in today or?
Yep, they came today.
Okay.
You should have got a memo from me.
Yeah.
Before this meeting, which had a couple of pictures to show you them, they're on the visitor's side. Um, there's six sets of bleachers, so we can seat about two hundred and forty people safely, um, and they can watch the games.
Yeah, so, and those will be here and just through like the season, is that what you're thinking through the football season? Are they gonna be keeping them longer term?
So realistically, as short as possible, but as long as we need them.
Okay, okay, you know, it would be good and maybe we can talk more in the Budget Subcommittee about what that, you know, unanticipated.
Yep.
Expense would be, um. The, the other things that were discussed were, again, the trash, so this, yeah, a lot of money that is going to other places. There was a reorganization that was approved for the town. They're gonna be having a finance department, which means that there is gonna be. Um, added monies for administration to have a finance director. So that was interesting to, to hear a little bit more about and, you know, in thinking about how. I just wanted to give appreciation to our, um, administrative staff. I know that for the past couple of years during COVID, the, the same, the salary increase has been the one point seven five percent. And you, you know, it's not been something that's been easy to accept, but I do want to extend my appreciation because I feel that. Against all odds, we, you know, have stuck to what we are able to do. And I, I think obviously anyone would have wanted more, um, and as would our teachers, as would our, our paras. Who are also leaving, so just trying to be as fiscally prudent as we can and just recognizing that it's a team effort. And just applaud the school department for really taking, doing that and taking their part in that, which was not easy under the circumstances, so. Um, CPAC, CPAC is welcoming a new, um, member, Nancy McNeil will be joining. And, uh, there was a, we, we actually met, kind of not really. Um, because a, a couple of people couldn't attend, but we will be planning on having. Because a couple of people couldn't attend, but we will be planning on having CPAC meetings, starting on. The first reverting back to the, but it's gonna be on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of every month, and so Jeff will. Connect with you about, because I know that there. The opportunity to have your goals. I know that was part of the conversation is how we can, you know, engage and. Have you at those committee meetings and if however, we want to pick up the collaboration meetings at some point, you know, however you want to recommend that. And and then I did have a couple of follow up questions to some things as I was reading the. The minutes. The hybrid meeting, is there any, anything with owl? Are we? What is, where where are we with considering hybrid approach or or not or?
I did get the final, finally got the list from Mark Menasian about the equipment he was talking about. And I. Can't remember what it was. Was it like three thousand dollars, Brian, I think? So we are gonna go forward and order that. Once the craziness of the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, no, that's great. No, I I I wanted to just get it updated. I imagine it's.
It's a mobile cart basically, so it can be very versatile, has a large TV screen and it has. Equipment to. Stream, live stream to YouTube. You can also hook it up with the Zoom. If it's going to the YouTube channel, it's recorded automatically. It somehow, obviously he'll show me how it works when it gets in.
Right, well, that eliminates the need for a student to not have to stay with us through the whole period if, you know, because I know WAVM was recording, you know, and then they. Have to go upload it, can we lessen that burden?
Pointed out, that's part of the chapter seventy-four program. They need so many hours of actually. Performing that type of service.
Oh, okay.
So we're still gonna have a student, most likely.
Okay.
Colleen, I remember that you said you were gonna, you were gonna play with it and experimented with it with it. How how did that work?
I did with the owl. It was a very small group. We didn't have any trouble. I mean, we actually, we had a little. Volume issue, but not because of the owl, because of a person at the desk couldn't for some reason get onto the Zoom with her volume. I mean. It was a very brief, it was just us playing around with it.
Okay.
To get a better sense, it would be better to do it at like a subcommittee meeting and see if we can do it that way. But I mean, it seems fairly simple to use, just plug it in, you. Zoom picks it up as the microphone. It pretty much does its own thing.
So once we have these, you're thinking that we're gonna be in the Fowler library again using that?
That's easier because we have the large space. We have, it's open till nine with custodians with access to the building for anything we might need.
Got it.
Okay, and then there was. Something that I just wanted to also mention, they approved some electrical credits at the the select board, but it went for the whole town. So I don't understand the logistics of that, like they do like. So I just wanted to make sure, Brian, if you and Wayne, you know, I don't know how that's gonna impact our electricity or how that. Could we pay our own? And also in constitution with like solar as those conversations, I don't know how that's working at the high school with, we talk about credits and behind the meter and all that stuff. It gets a little bit more technical, but there was some conversation about. Buying blocks of of and it would be for the all municipal buildings, including the school buildings, so I don't know what that means or. But I just wanted to put it on your radar and then also to ask, have you wear anything on the solar? Has that?
It will.
Okay.
First of all, I'll follow up with Greg on what you just mentioned. I know Wayne and I did go over to the town hall. Offices about a week and a half ago and that would include a DPW and Greg and a consultant. To work with some of what you're talking about. And to do an assessment of the town, including the school buildings, the whole town as a. One entity and see what savings can be found, but there hasn't been any movement on the former. Solar with select, so I think we're waiting on them to come back to us that we, I will follow up with Greg on that as well.
Yeah, so I guess it would be, I'd be interested in understanding the credits that they talked about. Is that something that we would get? How would that impact? How we expense, like would we get a smaller amount or, you know, a bill or however that metering would be, it'd be just good to get. A little bit more context on that. And and then I think the only other thing was the charter review committee was, it's kind of at a rap. Not a rap in the sense that the updated charter has been recommended to proceed forward from the charter review committee, so it has to go. To legal, it has to go to the state to get approved. It has a whole, but it has to go town vote. Two different times, so it's gonna be like another year before it actually will be fully implemented. There's a timeline that we're following and we will be having some open forums. To, you know, include the public. There, it was some substantive changes. Typically, the ones regarding notice, giving notice, I know that was something that came up a couple of times and how to do that. There's actually an MGL that talks about where anyone can give a notice directly to the town clerk and you can future date a notice. As well, so that isn't something we kind of codified it a little bit more because there was confusion. About that in the past and a couple of other areas, just to emphasize a little bit more fiscal transparency. Which we've already been doing about quarterly reports and and that kind of stuff, so. And and that's just really, I just wanna just thank everybody, beginning of the school year, teachers, parents, I know it's parents, kids. Exciting short week, but I'm really excited. It's been really great weather today too.
Elizabeth?
I have just a couple of things. First of all, I was, I don't know, we probably, it's probably too soon, I have a timeline for this, Brian, but and potentially Chuck. Do we know when we're gonna get a student on our school committee this year? It might be again, too soon to know.
I'll follow up with or Chuck, one of us will follow up with the high school principal and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. And the second thing I wanted to bring up was, I know there was a meeting I couldn't attend over the summer where the school committee set goals. And so I'm hoping that we're gonna see those soon because I'd like to start rolling with our subcommittees and the and what we agreed, I think it was. The July meeting, but it may have been the August meeting where we talked about how, once we have our goals in place for the school, whole school committee. Then we can start using those to set up the the subcommittee goals. And I'd like to get those rolling because it is, you know, getting towards the middle of September and I'd like to get us, you know. All together so that we're not in the same situation where it's January and we're approving goals. So if, so I'd like to, I'd like to get those lined up as soon as we can, if we can.
Yeah, and actually I wanted to ask about something that you brought the goals, but.
Go ahead.
No, the the, so there actually was a policy, I was looking for other policies, I found there's a a policy about the. District goals and strategic plan that Maynard has, it's policy one oh four. And so I just wonder if that would be not one oh four, one oh three, I think, yeah, one oh three. So, you know, just in conversations as we're, I don't know how much we want to amend that or if it doesn't work the way we intend, it might be a good place to start. To see. Because I know, I feel like we're a little bit reinventing the wheel every year and really be great if we don't have to do that every year. If we could just fall back on the actual policy we have to to follow the structure and change it to how we we think it needs to be, but Brian, I I didn't. I was looking for older district improvement plans and I found some other things in a documents folder. But I didn't see it posted on our website anymore. I know Jennifer had one that she was working on a couple of years ago. But I can't find it posted anywhere. Is that something that we could? Recirculate or share? I mean, I probably could find it in an email somewhere, but Mary, does that? Remember that, like there was, there was a district improvement plan, right? And it was like many pages. And then it had, actually it had, I think the first page was the one with the pillars, right? That's where part of it came from. So I just was wondering if we, I want to just make sure we're having that alignment that, you know, we're, we keep talking about and.
Yeah, we're gonna, to your point, we're going to revive the district improvement plan and I think what you're referencing, just based on the comment about the chart is the strategic plan. It could be.
I couldn't find it, I couldn't find that either posted, so maybe that's.
Superintendent information.
Okay, so it's not under the district stuff then.
And we'll be working on the district improvement plan.
Okay.
This coming week, I actually have a, setting up a meeting for Tuesday.
Yeah, I saw that there was one just for reference when I was looking at the, there's one from FY eighteen and, you know, the format of that looked somewhat. More, it had like the district goal and then under it had different what the school goals were for each one. And they're actually, I don't know if that works or however that, you know, Beth, I know you're gonna be connecting, but just, it just kind of better demonstrated that alignment that, you know. We're talking about, so.
Anyway, so, yeah, so I just looked at the policy one oh three and it doesn't, it does, it does say the same kind of thing we have been following and, but my point is. You know, what is not here, it's just that level that we already, we talked about to improve our practice, which is that we, which is that we consider. That better, the best practice would be to have goals that are come from the school committee and then dividing those up between the subcommittees and then using those to guide our. Our actual meeting, so each meeting has a point and an end goal to it, so I just want to make sure that we, I think that's a really good idea. It makes a lot of sense. This was really effective in the DEI subcommittee and I'd like to make sure that we're doing that in our other subcommittees, and so I just want to make sure we get that rolling, so it ends up being effective this year. The other, the last thing I just want to mention real quick is that, speaking of liaisons, I am the liaison to the human resource. I always say resource, but the HRC, the HRC, and so I'm a meeting with the chair of that next Saturday to talk about. The goals of that committee and kind of make sure that we're aligned there too. So that's, that's it so far.
And just talking about liaisons and stuff like that, I reached out to. Mike, the contact that I had for art space and I've not heard back yet, so I'm hoping I might need to. Send it out again, just to find out what's going on, so. All right. Now on to our consent agenda.
Mara, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Sorry, and I know, I'm sorry tonight, just. So I just. When I think about the function of the school committee and what our purpose is, I'll, it's been restated, it's, you know. In support of the students and supportive of staff. When I think the school committee gets information that is. When it, by the time it bubbles up to the school committee, I assume that there have been many steps that have already been attempted to be taken and so. It is a level of frustration where parents or staff. May get to a point that they feel they have no recourse and so I know this is gonna be a conversation maybe later on we can have, but. I would wonder why that is, you know, and I think when those type of complaints come up, I I really. And school committee members want to explore them a little bit more, whether they're be in a private session, executive session. And the majority of school committee members feel that way, I think we are entitled to have those conversations where it feels like it might be more of a systematic issue. To get a better understanding of, so. I just will leave it at that and I know we'll follow up, but I wanna clarify that that is, I feel it is my duty as a school committee member to ensure that when those type of. Things are raised and they're not periodic or infrequent or they're extensive and they demonstrate. Some type of level of concern that asking about. How the matter is something that we should be doing and we should not be felt to. Question on why that it's not outside of our purview or anything to that effect, so anyway. That's all I have to say.
So we're moving on to the approval of minutes. And. Looks like we just have the one from. May twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I had, I noted the edit just to expand Charles's role, his fabulous work that he does, I want. Make sure that we're reflected in our minutes. Sorry, Charles, if I had picked up on that before.
And I had just a couple of. Type of stuff punctuation. So. Do we need, so.
Think without objection, I think you can accept.
Alright, so without objection. We approve. The minutes for May twelfth, twenty twenty-two with the changes indicated. No objection, those are approved. Then. We have the warrants. Colin, do you have the the numbers of the warrants?
I do.
I know you sent an email, but I.
It was eight, nine and ten.
Do we, can we just?
It can be without objection unless somebody needs to have B recruits.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I'm I'm fine.
Okay, great, so.
That objection, with that objection, you would accept the approved warrants and then you list them.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll approve the warrants. Eight, zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, nine and zero, one, zero. And all approved. Okay. So we have a motion to adjourn super, super early.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Great, we'll call, vote.
Second, second, I want a second.
Yeah. Natasha?
Oh, do we want to get a second on that?
I thought somebody did.
Second.
Okay. Elizabeth for a second. Natasha?
Yes.
Mary?
Oh, Mary's muted.
Oh, is she? Oh, boy.
Thank you. Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mauro, yes.
Alright.
This is a record.
Yes.
Adios.
Alright, go sleep.